This is a proclamation supporting up our election green light for veterans. Whereas the residents of City of Creedmore have great respect and admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and its community and the armed forces. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices that those who serve in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. Whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that a high percentage of service members experience increased levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas the City of Creedmore seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And therefore, I, Robert Quigman, Mayor of the City of Creedmore, do hereby declare the 14th through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2024, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And I encourage our citizens to recognize the importance of honoring all those who make immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in the windows of their places of business or residence. In testimony whereof, I hereby pledge to you, set by hand and costly official clearance in the city of Creedmore, the fourth day of Creedmore, 2024. There is a C presentation of the Star Award with T. Quigman.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the board. It is my honor to stand before you tonight to recognize one of the most generous and caring people I've met in my time in Creedmore. This is a surprise, and I think we pulled it off. Yeah, no, I don't think you need to.
I did not.
Surprise.
You thought I was just saying your name.
I did, yeah. I was being sneaky, I tried to block it out.
Oh, well, I'm not saying it's my fault.
Caitlin works at First Baptist Church Creedmore and is a vital member of the FBC Academy staff. In addition to her administrative duties at FBC, it is not unusual to see Caitlin performing various duties at the church events, picking up kids in school, decorating a church for events. It is also not uncommon to see Caitlin strolling around the police department, delivering snacks, dropping off dinner for our officers on night shift, engaging in discussions with our staff, and putting tape over the microphone in my office for any other prank she can pull off.
That's very nice.
Absolutely. Caitlin has been a trusted and vital part of our community. She graduated from last session of our citizens academy and has told us all stories about the kind of police officer she would be. Whenever we need or ask anything from Caitlin, she always made herself available by simply saying, "Just tell me what you need, and I'll be there." Caitlin is people like you who are strong in their faith and have a true passion for serving others that makes you a vital member of the City of Creedmore and a part of our team. Your willingness to help us with different projects does not go unnoticed. So on behalf of members of the Creedmore Police Department, I would like to present you with our Star Award. A special thanks and recognition award is given to members of our community who go above and beyond to support our mission of providing stellar service to our citizens. You truly exemplify what it means to be a public servant. Again, thank you for all you do to assist us. While I'm standing here, we're giving surprises. Jessica don't know about this.
I'm not, I didn't even do a wave.
No, there's like three people that know about this. Maybe she wouldn't show up. Demon. This too comes as a complete surprise, but as I said, I knew if I planned it and told Jessica, she wouldn't show up, so here we are after catch her by surprise. In today's time and climate, I understand the importance of community involvement and the relationship that exists, that needs to exist between police departments and communities they serve. I knew that we had to continue to build upon this tradition and community involvement that was already in place before our arrived year. Prior to Jessica coming to CPD, we met for lunch, discussed my vision. She wanted to know exactly where she could fit into the vision. We didn't really get a chance to talk during lunch because at the restaurant, everybody knew Jessica and had to go speak to her, so we had the perfect job for her. Then she joined us in May of 2023. She's primarily served as our community liaison officer, where her duties were to think of creative ways of members, for members of the police department to interact with members in our communities. At her direction, we resumed community cookouts. We held cookies with cops to Christmas and various other activities that created opportunities for us to interact with the public. Jessica has also filled in as school resource officer. She's helped with investigations, filled in on patrol, and has assisted in almost every facet of the police department. So on behalf of your coworkers, I would like to present you, again, also with our Star Award.
All right, we'll move on down to full business of public hearing on the annexation AN-2024-02 Mount Energy Booster Pump Station. Mr. Frank, I just want to do a little introduction on this before we go into public hearing.
Sure. AN-2024-02 is the little 0.122 acre postage stamp on the campus of Mount Energy Elementary School. So this actually is a complement to the previous annexation that we did, and we are filling our own donor hole that we created there with this separate parcel by annexing it similarly as we did the first, and then we will follow up with an ensuing rezoning request like we did the first. But the duties for tonight is to conduct the required public hearing on the question of annexation. There is a certificate of sufficiency that's been included in your packet that was signed by the clerk, which of course says that this parcel is indeed eligible for annexation. And similarly, there is an ordinance, annexation ordinance 2024-0-10, which is included in your packet also. Any questions I can answer?
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
All right, at this time, I will open the floor to public hearing. The floor is open, if anyone who would like to make a comment, or positive or negative, or any input at all decisions. Hearing any, I will close the public hearing. And we will move on to the ordinance itself. Is there any questions about the ordinance? Hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-0-10, annexing 0.122 acres, made at the Mount Energy Booster Pump Station, into the corporate limits. Motion is made by Mr. Wilkins, although the favor say aye. I oppose no. Motion carries by zero. Thank you, sir. If you'd love to.
Just stay there.
All right, we move from the public hearing and the motion to the 9D, which is the wayfinding project. Mr. Frank goes.
So our wayfinding project has gone along swimmingly. We all heard recently from our contractor that he thinks they're going to be up by the end of the month of November. I'm going to cross my fingers and hope that he's indeed correct. We were able to get in this late last minute change, and I think it's a very worthy change. I think identifying and pointing folks to the Veterans Memorial, I think, is a good idea. Certainly, it was not considered in the initial wayfinding destinations because it's only recently become a destination as of July or so of 2024 when it was unveiled. So in your agenda packet, you did see the three sign locations. Each of these signs are two-sided signs, so they will each have three destinations with arrows. And the one thing that might be slightly different that I want to let you know from what was in your packet is the NC DOT preferred arrow order. They like it to be left arrow on top, right arrow in the middle, and straight ahead. So it will differ slightly from the order that you see included in your packet. In some cases, I didn't exactly put the left arrow on top. But also in the recent email from late last week, I think y'all saw a good mockup again, the example updated, that is exactly, you know, the sign we wanted it to be. And they are in fabrication, so, like I said, fingers crossed, we're going to get to see them here before Christmas, when I really didn't want to get your all hopes up that it would be out there before Christmas, but it seems that he might do it. Goodness. Questions that I can answer?
Mayor Pro Tim.
So on the signs, the ones, I appreciate the fact that we can get the Veterans Memorial notated because the Veterans Memorial has been adopted by the Combat Veterans Organization as a destination to come and pay homage to veterans. And I believe that a designation needed to be made. There's one in Oxford, there's one in Raleigh, there's one in Durham, I believe. There's Veterans Memorials all over the signs, so I'm glad we can do that. Now, on the signs on Masonic, I would like to see, first of all, the signs should match on both sides, in my opinion. They should have the exact same information on the northbound as the southbound, with just different directions with the arrow. But I would like the signs on Masonic to say City Hall, Police Department, and the last one can be Community Center and Lake Rogers. But we need to notify, we need to put a Police Department designation there because it will be a separate building and people coming to the city that are not familiar with everything is. I know I've been in a town where somebody has hit a car or something, and I'm looking for the Police Department. So I think the Police Department, so the ones on Masonic, I would like to see City Hall, Police Department, and whatever else the board feels either Lake Rogers or shopping to put on that one. And then the ones on Church Street, shopping, the Gauntlet, and Community Center. Shopping, yes, Gauntlet, yes, Community Center, we could put on that too. It's just, the Community Center is appearing on every single line we have, had every single and I understand we don't have a million different destinations, so I
And we didn't choose to put Willow Oak Room. Y'all remember, we kind of tossed that around too.
Right, no, I think Community Center is better.
Which was all encompassing, would include everything out that side, the gymnasium, the Willow Oak Room, and
I think that's a great idea, just Community Center and, but I would like to see the ones in the middle, City Hall, and then the Police Department, and I don't know about the third one. Well, I definitely want a designation for the Police Department.
Can it be City Hall slash Police?
Doing anything at this late date is going to
That's what I was going to ask.
I really delay everything. Squeeze out this last one for the Veterans Memorial.
Yeah, I wouldn't know.
And a change at this late date is going to be a challenge.
But we weren't even asked about this.
These were distributed via email.
And I did respond to it, and I put Police Department on the one that I responded with. The email I answered back, because I know I answered back, and I put Police Department on the one that I answered.
Have a good answer for that, because I don't know that it came to me. Was it sent back to me?
Well, I did a, I believe I did a reply, or no, I probably sent it only to Mike because I didn't want to do a reply or get in trouble for that.
Mr. Albright.
I was, well, I had pushed it back before, that's all right. I was wondering about the Falls Lake thing, because isn't there a brown sign here on Main Street or down on 15 that says Falls Lake?
Falls Lake Info Center. That's where the office is for Falls Lake Management. This is intended as a recreation destination.
Yeah.
And again, it was crossed out because Raleigh as a formal name of a municipality couldn't be included on our wayfinding, similar to why Oxford couldn't be included. So formal city names would not be allowed. That's why we went with the little bit less formal, you know, the Gauntlet, City Hall, Lake Rogers, things that weren't to the T, the formal name, that might get confused with an official DOT directional sign.
Yeah, so you said that each one of these would have a front and a back.
Yes.
The same thing, right?
It's not the same thing, no. Based upon the direction you're heading, the destinations are different. One is northbound side and one is southbound side.
Okay.
Mr. Wilkins.
Mr. Frank, I got excited when you said they'll be here by the end of November. At this point, should we not mess around with what we have to get to May by the end of November?
I don't want to delay it further. I feared that now a delay would cause us
So my other question is, can you add to this at a later date once the Police Department is actually built?
Yeah, I don't have a good answer for that because I don't know. I'm not sure how easy or hard it's going to be to change them up. I don't even know the answer. Mike had asked me the question, are these individual panels that could be removable? And I don't think they are, at least in the illustration, they don't look that way.
But would they not be able to create a new panel?
I'm sure you could, or you could scrape the sign and do something, yeah, I'm sure you could change it.
I personally would lean towards doing that rather than delay the signs in November.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tim.
My personal feeling is that the City of Creedmore is paying for these signs. And I don't want to pay to highlight somebody else's area, you know, that and to be honest with you, I'm the only one on this board that has worked on these signs for five years. And I really don't, I don't like putting on different things on the backside of a sign. They should, I believe both sides should be the same in different directions. So I'm looking to see my response. I know that I responded back, and I'm pretty sure, there it is, City Hall, Police Department, and Lake Rogers. City Hall, Police Department, and I put down Harris Park on one of them. But I don't think Masonic is going to point at Harris Park, it's too far down the road. But yeah, that's what I put on, and I answered this in May, on May 20th. So I just, I would like, I don't understand from, from May, I understand that nobody answered. I don't know if anybody else answered except me, but we took off Highway 85, which was in one of them.
Yep.
And I just believe that a person coming from out of town who might need a police officer needs to know where the Police Department is. And I don't know what to say if we're too far down the line. It shouldn't hold it up that much, but if I was going to vote on this, I would say no because I think the Police Department in our city is just as important as all these other locations, much more important than recreation.
Mr. White, any comments?
No.
Mr. Police.
Mr. Frank, you're talking about six different posts?
No, three posts, two signs on each.
Great, and they're all on one side of the street?
Uh, no, they're actually on different sides. Their location was based upon areas that were available. Our consultant came to town, looking at the three different intersections, and decided which was the best likely location that could be approved for DOT and which were not conflicting with the
So my question is, if there's a sign that says shopping, Community Center, downtown, on one side it says that, on the other side there's directions, or is there two different signs?
It's one sign with two different sides.
In other words, if I'm going down, if I'm going north, I got to look in the southbound lane to get directions?
Potentially, yes. The sign, so I'll give you, I'll let you know the, on northbound Main, we're coming up northbound Main Street over here. The sign at that location is going to be on the left side of the right away. It'll be near the First Baptist Church corner there, where there are white fences there. That sign, because that's the location where you could sync a sign without worrying about underground utilities. And in that case, it's going to say shopping to the left, Gauntlet to the right, and downtown straight ahead. But on the other side of that sign, if you were coming southbound at that same location, it's going to say shopping to the right, Gauntlet to the left, and Falls Lake straight ahead. It can't be the same because the downtown wouldn't be ahead of you on the southbound side.
Yeah, Community Center is not there.
And that's, and that one, right, the Community Center is not there. I just think you're heading in a different direction so that, so the destinations can't be the same on both sides.
So there's three sign posts?
Yes.
Okay. Then my question would only be, we put these signs up just the way they are, and tomorrow, we build something that we need to take that sign and we shouldn't be that anymore, it should be this. So I'm saying we go ahead with this, we'll find out from this company how big a deal of this they had a new piece replaced with a different name on it.
So it may or may not be able to be a new panel. It may or may not be able to scrape off, let's say if they were vinyl letters and put up new ones, or it might take a whole new panel. I don't know the answer to that. We're going to, we'll have to find that out because I haven't seen them yet fabricated. I don't know if those destinations are removable or not. I have, I have to see it in real life to know how they would do that. So I don't have a good answer for you on that because I don't know. Certainly, I think they are a sign, and the signs can be changed, no problem. But if we change them at this point, we would be delaying the delivery.
Like I say, we're buying something that we know. Maybe not in my time, but at some time, we're going to need to change the destination on one of those.
Of course, of course.
We're going to have to find that out anyway. If changing, I have no problem with changing to the police, but if changing the police needs, it means we're not going to get the signs till December 31st. I would move ahead with it and then we'll make it arrangements to get it changed. We'll find out. It's got to be, I mean, I can't imagine they would make a product for directions in cities that they know it's going to change.
Mr. Wilkins.
And to make a point, valid point, I would like to see it say Police too, once it's built. So as Commissioner Quigman said, and I've said previously, let's find out if and when that can be done.
Since this is pretty much just a possession item anyway, you can find that out.
Sure, will do.
Do a reexamine, and again, if it works, I think you can find out by then. Mayor Pro Tim.
Are we instructing the company to hold?
We're not doing anything with the company.
Right, but do we want, if they've got to go and phone with these signs, and they're trying to find out if they can be changed, we should tell them to hold until we get it.
Well, Mike can reach out to them, find out where they are, what the timeline is, and what kind of changes they've made before they put a final stamp on it, I would think.
I hope it's not done already, but yes, I will check out. He made, he indicated to me that this Veterans Memorial change was exactly the last bit that we could get in. I mean, but I will, I will ask him about adding the police. Maybe it is as simple as an addition, and maybe it fits on that line, but I don't know.
Well, again, if they change, if they give us some opportunity to change the sign, we can always do that every time the new police station. All right, everybody good with that? All right, let's, I see. Any resolution prohibiting viewing of inappropriate material on city networks and devices? Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. September the 3rd, I was notified by the city attorney. Effective October 1, 2024, a new law was passed in North Carolina statewide prohibiting pornography from being viewed on government networks and devices. North Carolina General Statute 143-805 requires public agencies to adopt policies by January the 1st, 2025, governing the use of their network devices. Starting annually in 2025 and not later than August 1, and in the format required by the state chief information officer, the city clerk shall report information on the number of incidences of unauthorized viewing or attempted viewing by the, on the city of Creedmore's network and devices. The City of Creedmore currently has a personnel policy that addresses employee violations and possible disciplinary action for those violations. The only other action recommended by the city attorney is for the Board of City Commissioners to adopt a resolution prohibiting viewing of pornography on city networks and devices. That resolution is included, as well as the email from Kevin telling us the only action required was to use their draft resolution and put our information on it and ask the board to adopt it.
I didn't look through this whole thing. Do they throw in there a definition of what they consider pornography?
Yes, sir, they did. Yes, they did. It's on page 45. There's footnotes on page 45, a memo from, to all local governments from the borough's law firm who they represent, notifying all of those agencies.
All right, Mr. Wilkins, any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Albright?
No, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim.
This went into effect October 1st, and we're just changing it now.
It didn't go in, well, Kevin told us we could wait till the first of the year if we wanted, we just didn't want to put it off that long.
There's a new law that goes into effect October 1st and requires action by local governments on Jan, in January.
By January.
So that's all I'm saying is, you notified this two months ago, and we're a month behind.
Well, Kevin said it didn't actually have to be done till January the 1st, so
Yeah, it says update policy by January 1st.
So the first reporting due date is going to be August 1st if we've had any violations.
And also, we already
Hopefully, there won't be anybody.
We already had a policy in place. This was just to add to that. Mr. Police.
Mike, have you discussed it all with VC3 about putting filters on our networks so that people can't, people should not be able to get to any pornography, sir?
Right. Sarah was on the phone with him today, sharing this information if it can pass tonight, so be aware of that, yes, sir.
And it should be pretty inexpensive.
I'll follow up, Sarah.
Mr. White. Just a motion to adopt resolution 2024-R-16. Motion is made by Commissioner Way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries by 2-0. 10A, 10B, discussion of Board of Commissioners' work session meeting date. City Manager.
At the October 21st board meeting, Mayor Wheeler asked the Board to give some thought to possibly moving the Board's regularly scheduled work sessions from the 3rd Monday of each month to the 3rd Tuesday of each month to allow any members to attend other boards or committees, which is currently in conflict with the city's meeting schedule.
Mr. White, any questions or comments? All right, at this time, I don't have any.
Sir, at this time, I don't have any, um, issues with such a net.
Mr. Gleason.
I, I think it's a good idea that we don't have our meeting on the same night, it's a county meeting. I go to as many county meetings as I can go to. When I first got involved with the city, a commissioner was assigned to go to a county meeting. One commissioner was given an assignment to attend the county meeting for this month. If you look at the minutes back in two thousand and eleven or twelve, it was an assignment to go to the county meeting.
Yes.
Um, I like to go to the meetings, and I would like, I, I don't, to me, there's no problem with having both of our meetings on a Tuesday night.
Well, and then one of the reasons I think we did away with that is because then they started appearing on the same night, so you couldn't really assign somebody, because they really needed to be here. Uh, Mayor, pro ten.
The only issue that I would see is if it's a, a week that has a holiday on a Monday, they're gonna shift till Tuesday, and we're gonna, but that's only for holidays that we would have a conflict.
Yeah, and if, if we miss that one time of going to one of their meetings, it's not definitely a deal.
But the school board meetings are on that night, on, tonight, so tonight we have us, the county, and the school board. So yes, I think this is a good idea.
See, that way we can, if you wanna go to one, somebody else go to the other, it just works out better. Uh, Mr. Albright.
Yeah, I have no conflict.
Mr. Wilkins.
I have no issues, sir.
All right, this is purely for discussion, but based on the consensus, we will direct the City Manager to shift our meeting dates for work sessions to the Tuesdays, revamp the, the, uh, calendar.
Beginning January the first of twenty twenty five, or what's that?
About to say effective when, I was just about to ask that.
And we've all got one more.
Yeah, so let's do.
Yeah, January, I forget that.
A new twenty twenty five calendar.
Will do.
All right, well, all right. Ten-year Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Systemwide Master Plan, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last ten-year Parks and Rec Comprehensive Master Plan was adopted by the Board of City of Crete Moore, June ninth, twenty fourteen, so it's been ten years. Since that time, a new community center has been constructed, trail city walking trails, and other recreation amenities have been added. The primary objective of a master plan is to conduct thorough evaluation of the city's parks, facilities, and programs to assess their capacity to meet the recreational needs of a growing community. The scope of work for a project like this includes project administration, community engagement, resource and data collection, implementation strategy development, and development of final plan documents and supporting material. A detailed copy of the project's scope of work is attached for the Board's information. Funding for this updated master plan was included and approved by the Board in the FY twenty twenty five Capital Improvement Plan totaling seventy-five thousand dollars. On September tenth, twenty twenty four, a request for proposals for a ten-year Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Systemwide Master Plan was sent out to seven professional firms, as well as the North Carolina Recreation of Parks and Association for Posting, and the City Finance Department's, uh, RFP Requestful Proposal webpage with a return date of five o'clock on October twenty-one, twenty twenty four. Three qualified firms responded to the RFP within the deadline, all of whom have extensive experience and are considered leaders in the preparation of comprehensive plans. Proposals submitted in response to the RFP were as follows. Barry Dunn, seventy-five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, McAdams Company Firm, seventy-four thousand six fifty-five, and McGill Associates for eighty thousand dollars. An RFP Review Committee was selected by the City Manager. The con, the committee consisted of the manager, finance director, interim Parks and Rec Director, Community Development Director, and the City Engineer. Following a thorough review of the evaluation criteria, the Review Committee unanimously recommended awarding the project to the McAdams Firm, who submitted a very detailed plan, global experience, as well as being the lowest responsible bidder at seventy-four thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. In addition to city staff present here this evening, there's also two representatives of the McAdams Firm, Shaweta Nika Nanikar, I hope I got that right, principal in charge, and Jen Beadle, project manager with the firm. And they're here to answer any questions the Board might have as well.
If y'all would like to come to the podium, and just so it's in the record, identify yourself and your company, and then we will, I'll hook you up to forward questions.
Sure, my name is Shaweta Nanika, I'm the principal in charge on the project.
I'm Jen Beadle, I'll be the project manager on this project.
All right, let's start with Mr. Albright, any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Gleason.
I just thank you for a very detailed, uh, answer.
Mr. Wilkins.
I am looking forward to this. And, uh.
It'll be fifteen by then.
I am ready for a splash pad.
I'm with you, sir.
If I, if I'm not remembered for anything else, it's consistently requesting a splash pad.
You've got two votes for that right now.
Mr. Albright. Christian Wilkins.
Excellent report, thank you.
And Mayor, pro ten.
So, I am so excited that you're here, I remember meeting you, um, at one of our committees, I was there. Um, your proposal looks great, it talks about your grant expertise in this proposal. So you will be filing for grants while we go through this?
Uh, not through this project, but we will identify projects that might be good candidates for future grant applications.
Okay, how long do you think it will take to get the plan put together?
Typically, it takes ten to twelve months, we'll plan to finish within those twelve months.
And as much as he wants a splash pad, I want a playground behind the community center. And I have waited and waited, so I want a playground behind the commu, our citizens want a playground in our city.
And my people are well for it. We'll be alive.
All right.
Probably his kid will be driving, he will need the splash pad.
Nope, I'm gonna make every one of my kids, I don't care how old they are, they're gonna go jump in the splash pad.
And we're gonna insist that you do too.
I'll be right there with you.
We're all getting our way, I want a pickleball court for handicapped people.
There you go.
Okay.
We have our list.
There you go.
All right. At this point, we have, uh, I'm looking.
I make a motion that we approve the plan, Parks and Rec Comprehensive Wide Plan, presented by.
McAdams.
McAdams.
Motion to award ten-year master plan project to McAdams Firm and on a map, not to exceed seventy-four thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars was made by Commissioner Gleason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. My ash pad. She's had sticker notes more, what is it?
Oh, you should see their project they did in High Point, too, that was fine.
Let's see, that was master plan, we're looking at it, the North Main Commercial. Mr. Frank Gobson.
Yeah.
Uh, North Main Commercial.
Oh, all right, okay.
Now we're talking, I wasn't sure we were moving on.
Rambling.
Okay. LSP twenty twenty-four oh one, that's an acronym for Large Site Plan, as defined by our ordinance. Uh, this one is called North Main Commercial. Um, you see the project, uh, so we're in the final step of the site plan, yeah, you can just leave it there for a second. The final step of the site plan approval process is for the Board of Commissioners to act on the ministerial decision. In this case, the project has been through two, technical commute, review committee review cycles, and amended accordingly. Uh, y'all know that Stimel is our stormwater, um, review engineering firm, and they've reviewed this, have actually had three, uh, meetings with C three design, and obviously our staff, um, has reviewed this also. This project is on an NC DOT road, so DOT does have the final driveway approval regarding the North Main Street, um, access point. And as we know, that one is not yet in hand, um, at this day. So, in accordance, uh, with our process, the site plan approval is one thing. So know that our technical review committee has looked through it and scrutinized the, the proposal very carefully, things to include stormwater, um, lighting, parking, landscaping, refuse removal, building arrangement, et cetera. And then if the Board, uh, sees fit to proceed with the approval, the, um, utility allocation policy, uh, that the Board had adopted back a couple of years ago would then award this project its non-residential allocation. Um, that's been included also in a document in your agenda packet, um, where the applicant is requesting one thousand two hundred, uh, gallons per day of non-residential utility allocation that would serve two buildings with six units in each building, and each unit would be twelve hundred square feet. So if you wanna scroll through a little bit, Barbara, maybe I can just refer, uh, this is just a topographic illustration of the property. Its location with North Main on the left and Moss Road, there on the right, right at the V, and then near its intersection with US fifteen northbound, next one. Uh, this is just an illustration of the two existing, uh, structures historically that had remained on the property, those are identified purposefully because that's existing impervious surface area that the applicant gets to credit his property with. Uh, did you go backwards or forwards? Yeah, keep going forward, next one. So this is just an illustration of the parking lot layout, the driveway entrance. You do see that the driveway does have a left-in, a center turn lane for southbound traffic that would be able to make a left turn in, and the northbound lane does not have a turn lane, but it has a, uh, widened radii which allows for a faster movement on that right-hand turn, um, exiting North Main Street. Parking lot is in the front, the stormwater is in the back, you could see some of that shaded, um, area immediately behind the buildings, there are stormwater, um, file swales there. And then there is additionally some stormwater SEM, uh, component right along the front, closest to the intersection with fifteen and North Main, next slide, yes, sir?
Mr. Albright.
Uh, Mr. Barbara, if you look at that, Mike, can you just put your pointer, can you show me where the driveway is? It's not a radii, I'm like, I have no idea where the.
Barbara, over to the left, to the left, to the left, down, 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 to the right, to the right, to the right, right? There, that's the entrance, go up to where the street is, go up right in there. That's where the street intersects the project.
Is that the only entrance, or is?
The only entrance, yes, sir.
The only entrance off Moss Road?
No, there is not, there is no frontage on Moss Road, at least very little, uh, down on the corner.
There's a little building, it's gonna be.
So the buildings are on the bottom of this picture, there are the two white squares, yep, right there. Yep.
The funeral home, maybe?
No, the funeral home is to, would be in the lower left-hand corner of this picture. Oh, okay, yes, yes.
That would be the side of this picture.
You're right.
I, I know it's on my terms, but I brought, I, I know how hard it is for ladies to look at black and white and see what's going on, when we look at weddings, I made a color to give it to you guys, Mike. And I just didn't think it was showing, you can, you can wing it, but, you know, real white is in the middle. So, it's a lot of black and white in that picture, and it's, it's hard for everybody to, you know, to. But I, I brought a hint after that, I was gonna teach you guys, if you wanna go in. I brought, I brought it today, just so they can.
Cover this, nevermind, I got lost.
It's the B M in the middle, right there, right in the middle, right there.
Red is the building on this one. Spiders, those are trees.
Those are fancy.
Those temples are trees.
Those are, those are fancy trees. They're palm trees.
So, yeah, what you see in red is the building, gray is the parking lot, green is porous or SEM area and landscape area. The spiders in the circles represent other species of trees along North Main and parking lot trees, um, in the parking lot to provide shade. Um, you can clearly see the roadway striping with the center turn lane and the painted mediums that are shown. This project also does have a sidewalk, it's very hard to see, but it is, all along the front from the Moss Road intersection, down the lower left corner, it's in that kinda beige, all the way along the North Main frontage, and up to, close to, uh, US fifteen as it can get. There's obviously a stub down there, because there's no connection, uh, proceeding further down. That's a real good math, Chad, you brought the right page. Yeah. Um, other things that I had, I only, um, wanted to show you details of the landscaping, which this does, and then the site lighting is, is also included here, um, I don't think there's anything else, really, that's too, too important. Again, we, we're close, we are ninety-five percent of the way squared away with the, with the site plan, we've gone through the details, um, you know, everything from the parking lot to the dumpster corral, to the landscape planting schedule, to the SEM installation. Yep. Are there any questions on this that I could try to answer? Oh, yes, sir.
Well, just one more, you or Chad?
Chad.
So the, the trees, I see the trees, are they gonna be older trees, so that they're not like, short to, yeah, to like, so you can see when you're pulling out?
Our ordinance only requires that they have a two-inch caliper. That when they're initially planted, you start with a two-inch caliper on deciduous trees. So they are small, they're, they're gonna probably be no taller than eight feet tall initially. And what you're seeing here is the mature dimension of these trees after they grow. You got a species name, do you know which one?
I definitely have taken plenty of the package, um, but, I mean, the trees, so DOT has a ten-by-ten, you have to stay outside. So, when you get to the property lot, it's a reserve, ten-by-ten, um, site cover, which you can't, it's like, it's like, you know, but even being in the pavement, it's not more further into the body, like, so, it's, it's nothing to struggle with. I mean, that's pretty, that area has pretty good height lines, it's nothing to be in a direction.
What, what is, like, the little, like, cookie cutter thing, what is the shape of that? Or is that just?
It's just a representation of a tree, I mean, that's, that would be, that would be an obvious.
Okay, so the spider things are trees, the, the, the trees in between it are?
Red maple, uh, lace bark elm, and nuddle oak. Those are the three that are U P, A R, and Q P. Oh, well, close, willow oak. Yeah, all, all the landscaping starts off small, we, they have to install it small.
Um, but, do me a favor, join him up there, just in case.
Well, let's go to the one more, I have, um, illustration, I mean, it, it's fine, Chad, you, you could.
Yeah, go ahead and stand with it.
There's the one, um, on the last page of the, keep going through the original agenda packet. I wanted to show you that, the, the cross-sectional view, yes. So this is important, our ordinance requires that all buildings on major telefairs reveal to us the cross-sectional elevation view. So in the upper left-hand corner, that is the front of the building. If you wanna describe it better, it's six doors, right? Each of those are identified individually as a tenant.
And actually, the architect has rendered as a five-unit layout, five or six, I mean, just depends on the market, but most likely, they're trending towards five, so they'll be twenty-five foot wide versus twenty.
That's all the difference.
Yeah, it does.
Our, our ordinance requires a certain amount of glazing, which is windows and doors, and then the rest is brick or masonry facade. There are also decorative sconces that are on that, um, building facade, and the parapet, you can see on the top, that's the, the parapet is like the roofline, you can see how it's varied, and it staggers up and then down, so that's to create that illusion of a separate building or a different space. So then as you go over to the upper right-hand corner, that's the little short side of the building, and that's the side that fronts the street, that's the side that's gonna be visible from Moss Road, the one that's on the further south, so that end gets dressed up, but the two. But the two inside ends, the sides that are faces close to each other, they're just going to have that metal finish. There's no reason to dress up the inside of the two different buildings because nobody really sees those. So, you dress up the front and you dress up the visible side from the road frontage. On the lower level to the left, that's the back. So, the back just simply includes the HVAC condensers, the electrical meters. Each of those units has a rear door and a little landing area. There is no vehicular traffic in the back. Back is only intended for pedestrians because it is so tightly filled with stormwater control. There's a bio-retention swell back there that is crucial to the management plan. No deliveries to the rear. They can come in the front.
I mean, it's a flex space and mostly it's probably like office, like, I mean, think about where I'm at, I'm next to Reno's right now, right? So, there's, there's no access to the rear. We have doors to go out back, like you think of the place over in Butner where the L Rio is on Central Avenue. I mean, if any deliveries are required for, for these types of businesses, most times they're small enough where they're handled on a box truck and they just have a pad jack that lifts down and then go into the front door, something there's no need for rear exit, for vehicular access. Unless it's industrial.
The, looking at your map, the multi-colored one, I come through that road every day to and from.
And I know that right there is the stop line, stop sign between Moss and 50 or 15 or whatever you want to call it. You're having to peek around the corner. Now, it doesn't really look like that's changed that much. So, I guess my question is, how is this advantageous the way you're doing it so that that's not a problem? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Well, I mean, it's...
You're coming down Moss Road, you kind of got to almost pull out the road to see if something's coming the other way.
To take a left?
If you're going to take a left to North Main, you've got to peek out to make sure there's not something coming.
I mean, that's just, the intersection's just not at a right angle. I mean, this being at a right angle, you have sightlines in both distances where you should not have to peek out in a road. It's no different.
Well, you have to do it now, and there's a clear space right there in that corner.
The way the intersection comes together, if you, I mean, you look, you look at the turn, you look at the angle, I mean, it's an acute angle. We're coming perpendicular, so...
Right, and I'm, I'm just saying that in, because I'm looking at those trees that you've got in there, especially one on the corner, right there at the point of the...
I'll take them out, those are city requirements.
No, but what you're looking at, you're not looking at the edge of the pavement, sir. The part that's colored is the property boundary. There's a good 10 to 15 feet of right-of-way before the edge of pavement.
And if it's, and it's... Oh, here, the edge of pavement is, is the, I mean, so, so this, you know, the road is showing there is the edge of pavement, so somebody on Moss Road, they're, they're right here looking that way, and I mean, it shouldn't be...
Yeah, but when they come right here, are they going to be able to see what's coming up all the way up this way?
No, they're further than you see now.
Well, but that's my point.
I mean, but I, I'm not, I'm not doing anything to that intersection. DOT, I tried to buy our property from the lady next door so we could actually have more of a way to maybe come out over there versus come out where we are and have those numbers. I mean, when DOT looks at the, the application, it's, they have to provide access to your property. I mean, you have to allow, be allowed access to your property. And the only place for access, I met with them well over a year ago, because we were working on this last year, and then the guy got worried about interest rates, so he waited until the spring to get back moving. But I had my land service permit last, last spring or summer. So, we were moving, and I had met with DOT several times, and this was the most viable mid-block intersection, mid-block, but still close enough to the stop sign where people are coming to a, they're already starting to slow down for the intersection of 15 if you're going northbound, so that they, you're already, you know, the speeds are minimal at this location. And we didn't have enough frontage. As somebody asked about Howie 15, I mean, we have a maybe 50, 60-foot frontage right there, and it's at the intersection of two roads, and so there was no way to put a access there. I mean, this is the only place.
Well, I wasn't concerned with your access. I'm concerned with making that turn.
I'm not developing that into the property. I mean, I moved the trees.
Like, I'm just with the trees and landscaping and all that. The way it looks, you're going to come to that stop sign, and even now, you have trouble seeing it with trees along that area, you're not going to be able to...
Like I said, I'll gladly move the trees or take them off. That's, that's the city requirement, not mine. So, you know, I would gladly pull them, I mean, you tell me what you want me to do, and we can do it.
We probably can get the DOT to put a four-way stop sign there.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Wilson, any questions? Commissioner Albright?
So, the median strips there, like the teardrops, the two median strips there, that would be, those would be in place?
It's just paint.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's paint, it's a, it's a painted median to make sure you have the appropriate tapers.
They're not cement, are they?
No, 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 no. No, so, and I spoke with DOT today. We've been through three reviews with them. This last one, they asked us just to move the curb, which it shows on this. You can see as you get towards the entrance, there's a, almost a 45 degree in that gray hatch area. They wanted us to bump the curb another six foot off the edge of travel lane, and so we've already updated that. I spoke with him this afternoon and asked him, I told him I had a meeting tonight, and I said, "Is there anything else you see before you issue a permit?" He said, "No, that was the last thing." That was Jerry Ryerson with DOT, that division office.
Good. Mr. Gleason, any questions?
Well, not, not really sorted. You got the pavement width, then you got the gutter, then you got a sidewalk.
So, so the sidewalk here is on our property, in a dedicated public access easement. That's typically what we end up...
But that makes the width of that open area that much wider.
Yes, sir. I mean, it's, it's, it's regulation to either have the sidewalk behind the curb or have it on the opposite side of the ditch, and we put it all the way backside of ditch, and there was no room to really regrade the ditch. So, we put it on our property. It'll be in a public access easement, which is common.
Commissioner White?
Mr. Frango, is this his own commercial business?
Just C-15 commercial.
Okay, so you can put in a sub shop, services, professional services, any kind of retail? Does the, has he already got people that want to go into this spot already?
I think four or five units of our office building, yes, sir, like office use. I'm moving there, so I'm going to, so I'm going to Cretemore again, but I'm, I'm going to move my office there once it's built.
What kind of retail?
Any kind, a C-15 commercial, any, any type of retail.
It'll be, I mean, what's expected to go here is just like what's downtown, you know, boutiques and hair shops and then office, you know, professional. It's flex, that's what flex space is. Somebody moves out downtown, they can, they can open a, no, over...
I don't need a dollar store.
No, no, it's not a dollar, no. Won't be a dollar store.
They are pro 10.
So, we still don't have the final report from the DOT, right?
I mean, they've issued comments that you have, and I mean, the final permit is, I mean, that's why we're this late being here, because I submitted plans to you guys in April, and DOT didn't respond until two, two or three months later in June. So, there's basically enough...
Sorry.
And, I mean, but once they finally got some new staff, they've been pretty responsive. They got us two reviews since July, and we're, we're like, right there.
So, if they change this in their final report, we're going to have a problem. We can't approve this if they make changes again.
Well, I don't think they will make changes because it's not like they can relocate the product. It's got to be at that location in block. So, it is where it is. What Chad said is there's a couple of tiny little details.
I mean, we're in our third review. They're, they can't, they're not going to change. I mean, it's not like they said, look for a new location. They said, you know, they've already reviewed the turn lane. The first review said add 30 more feet to the taper on this end, so the driveway's not moving.
Well, the problem I have with the DOT is they're very famous for putting turn lanes in. We have turn lanes to every subdivision in the city, but nobody can get out of those subdivisions off of 56 in the morning when traffic is as heavy as it is. And DOT is always concerned about getting into something, but they don't really put a, I am really concerned about this driveway coming out, and I know people are not supposed to be speeding down North Main Street, and I'll, and then I'm sure the chief has never issued a speeding ticket on that section of the road before. But it's almost a blind curve. I'm concerned about people coming out there. I'm also concerned about coming off of 15 and making a right, and, and, you know, people can speed everywhere. That, that's the bottom line, they can't. And I don't want to see this become a disaster for the city saying, "Well, you approved it, and traffic isn't safe, and this isn't right, and maybe we should add a four-way stop," and, which we're not going to do. But that is, that was the concern of the planning board, that that is a dangerous place to put a driveway. DOT, like I said, DOT is all about putting turn lanes in and widening an area to get cars in, but they're concerned about getting cars out when there's traffic or when there's blind spots where somebody can come out. That's concerning to me. Now, the one question I have is, in these two red boxes, and I, when Mike, when Mike showed us the frontage, we had five buildings, and then we had three. Are we putting two strips of five?
It's two buildings here, and it shows six on this plan because I had originally laid six out, but the architect has designed five units.
So, there's going to be two strips of five?
Two strips of five.
That's what I wanted to find out.
And I thought that, excuse me for taking out a turn, but I thought that top one on the right was here on...
That was just, it's the ends of each, it's that end, it's the people that are visiting from public streets. And only the traffic is that, I mean, the further you go this way is the closer you are to a blind turn. And we can't go any further to the intersection because we have to allow room to develop the left turn lane.
And I absolutely agree with you. It's, it's a hard decision because of the, the two entrances on both ends with that rate in the middle. But you're right, if you could have bought the property behind it, we could have come out on Moss. And I'm just pretty much, I'd like to wait for the final review from the DOT before we approve this, to make sure that there's no more further changes, because we can't approve something and they come in and make a change. Mike, explain to me how that works. Then it's got to come back to us.
Change is to come back. It's a reminder with the understanding that driveway is where it is, and it wouldn't happen now.
Well, the driveway's not, the DOT has got, has got the driveway in, and I will tell you that a Campo meeting two weeks ago, I met with the division director and asked him to please review this one more time, and that may be what happened recently with you, that they went over and checked it one more time and made that space a little bit wider. And that may be the final one that they do. But I had told him about this because the planning board was concerned about this, so I expressed my concern to him at a Campo meeting and said, "Can you take a look at this one more time? I'm just concerned." But I will say it again, DOT is famous for putting turn lanes in and getting everybody access, and I've got two commi, three commissioners who live right off of Highway 56, and two of them can tell you that coming out of those subdivisions in the morning is terrible. The DOT is real good about putting turn lanes in, but they don't consider getting people out of somewhere except for the driveway should go here. And I know it's a safety factor that they use, there's a safety component in it, but I'm just very concerned about this, safety-wise, that's all. I, I love your plan. I'm excited about this. I want this to, as long as there's no more beauty pollers, I want, I want to see this happen. I just, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. Let me know how you all feel. I just would rather we had the final DOT approval before we approve something and possibly have to change it. Do you have any idea when it's coming?
I mean, I thought, I mean, so Mike, when we submitted our first plans to you guys in April, he sent it out to y'all's governor and review committee, which is, DOT is included. They're asking them to have their comments back by a certain time. They didn't even look at it before the comments review, and then emailed me several days ago, said the link has expired, and you re-uploaded it to our portal. So, I can't guarantee when that happens, and, I mean, from all I understand, you guys approving this is approving that the administrative part of your duty is to, is the things on site that you can have per view over as met your orders, and that's what's happened, and you guys are finding. I, I understand the concern about the DOT interest, but the fact that it's not like it's not been seen, it's going to the third review. I mean, the site plan's pretty set, I mean, but waiting for them...
Don't you have to wait for them before you start construction?
Correct, but I also want to know that we have the allocation as well to...
Oh, alloc, yeah. I don't have a problem with the allocation.
I don't want to wait another three months for them to guarantee that the allocation not being taken over.
Plus, this is not a development. I think you'd have more of an issue if it was a development with people coming in and going out.
Well, it's, it's different, like, so, you, you know, you guys are trying to leave your houses during peak hours. This is a destination where people are coming in during peak hours, not leaving during peak hours, because people are coming here to get something to eat at some time where everybody else in the mornings are trying to get out to go to work, and it's not a complete thoroughfare. There's a stop condition right beside you, so there's intermittent breaks in traffic where people are having to stop to allow traffic in and out, because people are breaking to stop to turn left here. It's not just a concrete boom, 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 boom. And they also wanted us to re-stripe this to further make that traffic pattern slow down, where right now, if you're coming southbound on 15, you can, you can just kind of cut the, cut the, cut the radius where we're going to go in there and strike this formal island down where it just provides that visual guidance where maybe people will slow down a little more to make the right turn and then, or it's lethal forceful.
So, it's not just striping, it's an island?
Well, it's a striped island, no, it's, it's a striped island because you have truck traffic on this route, so, you know, if you, if you were to put concrete there, every truck controller that comes down route would put big damage in the island for that.
Commissioner Wilson, I've been trying to get to you.
No, I'm fine. I just want to say, I'm fine with it as it is, especially since it's a third review, so I'm good.
I have a question, and this, then we'll do what we need to do. You mentioned trucks coming down, but there's a weight limit on that road. Will any of that change? Okay, just wanted to make sure, okay. All right, anybody else have any more questions? Commissioner Gleason?
I just want to make sure everybody understands. That driveway is going to stay there. It's not going to move up the street or down the street. The only thing the DOT might make you do is cut a corner a little west, but that's where the cars are going to come out, that's where the cars are going to come in.
If you see the tapers that we have, it can't, like, they're going any further until the south. You end up being closer to the blind, you know, turn where people are coming around, you can't react to take a left into our site, and you also start to push the widening over building services, driveways, so you're, those people are sitting there with a taper, like, at my church, there's a half of a taper, and people think that's part of the turn lane, so you, people get over, but there's still not enough approval for cars, so you should not want to overlap entrances with the taper. So, it's, it's not moving. It hasn't moved, actually, the driveway hasn't moved through any of the reviews. Sometimes they wanted us to add the taper, but the driveway has not moved.
I'm fine.
I'll just pay some attention to the utility allocation question, so we all can recall. Originally, our non-residential allocation was set aside at 5,490 gallons per day, so this project is requesting an allocation of 1,200 gallons per day, which would still leave us with 4,290 for non-residential allocation.
You don't have any residential?
No residential.
Yeah, I was reading my notes.
Good job. Thanks.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve large site plan and award 1,200 gallons of non-residential utility allocation. Commissioner Albright?
Yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carries five to zero. Chad, I know this seems like a headache, but you'd be surprised how much heat we catch. I think Jesus could want to build a house, and we, we get the fun stuff about it. Thank you very much.
Be in touch, Chad. I guess we'll get it finalized with...
I mean, just, just so you guys know, my desire to use this turns into something nice. I, I put the property under contract originally so that somebody wouldn't get it into the gas station. I, I wanted to hit you with a free board and make something. I mean, it was no commercial, anybody could have got it, and so I was like, I really want that to be nice, because that's my way in Cretemore every day, and I, and so I, I've worked hard to try to get somebody who would develop it, I don't have a hundred, but to get somebody who would develop it with some taste and have a nice place on the northern Cretemore.
Sounds good.
That, that's my goal, I mean, I can't sit there and...
We thank you.
Mr. Frango, thank you, Chad. Mr. Frango.
I was going to say, we have one more?
Fast-paced urgent care.
Yes, sir. So, this is another large site plan. Uh, this one is located on what is known locally as Outparcels number one of the Creedmore Common Shopping Center. The street address designation is 2147 NC Highway 56 East. It's a 0.94 acre tract right on the corner of Darden Drive and NC Highway 56. Uh, this too is the final step of the site plan approval process, uh, to the Board of Commissioners to act on the ministerial decision. In this case, the process, project has been through three technical review committee review cycles and amended accordingly. Uh, additionally, in accordance with our policy, the board, um, with the board regarding non-residential allocation, this project is requesting 250 gallons per day of non-residential utility allocation. You wanna scroll through, Barbara, does this thing work? Maybe I can scroll through. Okay, so there's the survey, um, Darden Drive. Uh, road on the north is the private drive for Food Line. And on the bottom of this map is Highway 56. Um, I just wanted to pay attention specifically to the elevation here. You've all driven by this a million times, but obviously the roadway grade and the roadway elevation is higher than that of the Outparcels below the road. And that matters later on related to the rooftop units, which we'll show you, uh, some specifics about. So this is the site as they break it out. The building is there in that lighter gray, roughly in the middle of the track there. The cross hatch area is gonna be the stormwater, uh, control measure, the SCM. You see the parking lot as it lies with two ADA accessible stalls. Uh, there is a dumpster location there on the top of the northern, uh, north side of track. And then there is a sign location I'll call your attention to on the lower right-hand corner of the track. There's a little rectangle that you see there with the arrow. Uh, that's gonna be a monument sign location, obviously visible from 56, but clearly set back, um, enough. This is just an illustration of the garbage truck that would pick up the dumpster at the location there. So it's a little bit hard to understand, but as the pickup truck is heading in on Darden and makes the right-hand turn into the Food Line Drive, it would go head in to the dumpster corral to pick up the dumpster unit and dump there, back out to make that kind of a three-point turn, and then head forward again out on Darden. Um, the advantage of this, obviously, is not to have that heavy garbage truck on your private parking lot. And by leaving the dumpster there in that location, it allows them to utilize the common drive rather than private property. Obviously, the truck couldn't probably turn around on the site. So using that common drive allows a, a larger radiative dump truck to, uh, make that maneuver. This is just a little bit of a illustration regarding the SCM and its fast rail or retention there. And then the collection is the orange pipes that are also part of the stormwater control that moves the water from the parking lot back to the, uh, the control measure. Very heavily landscaped site, again, similarly with, uh, street trees, shrubs that surround the parking lot, and all required by our ordinance, deciduous trees that would provide shade ultimately upon mature growth. And then, of course, the SCM is heavily landscaped with aquatic plants. You see, uh, them in there in the blue, uh, they'd be on the shelf and likely sometimes underwater, and sometimes. Okay, this is the lighting plan. And obviously, lighting is important both for the tenant because they wanna get, uh, noticed and have people to easily see them. But obviously, we do not want the light to be disruptive to either traffic on NC 56 or Darden or any of the nearby, um, residential spaces, which, of course, there are on the other side of Darden. Um, one of the particular comments that was made, and you'll see the cloud roughly on the right-hand side of the sheet, is that the wall-mounted lighting units had to be full cutoff. And what you see there is a shielded light fixture that does, uh, direct all of the light down. It does not allow, um, for horizontal gra- glare. But of course, there are parking lot lights and other means of illumination stances on the wall, intended, obviously, to make the building noticeable. Uh, this is the illustration of the rooftop units. There are three, uh, condensers and/or air handlers, most of just components of your H3C, uh, that in this case are gonna be on the roof. And because of the low elevation of the building, that's why they do need to have additional screening. So this is a cross-sectional view of the screens, these little houses essentially that get put up around the rooftop units, so they're disguised. Um, also, you can see the, the nice masonry brick facade and the glazing, uh, that's along the frontage of the doorway and the windows. And then it gave a really nice color, color rendering. That's the other side of the building. There will be some statues on the wall and the back. All sides of this building are brick, there are no metal, um, facades that are showing. And I think that's a pretty good-looking building. And that's an illustration, not on our site, but that's just a great illustration of our building and that will ultimately appear on our site.
Do you know if they're gonna be affiliated with any particular hospital?
I don't have the answer to that question, do you?
No, they're a standalone urgent care.
I love you. You want us to just board, this is Tyler, is that right?
Yes.
Tyler's a representative?
Hello, I'm Alice Hutton, we're gonna be the developer for this project, so Tyler's been working with us on going through permitting and everything.
So I guess they're not affiliated there, um?
No, they're just a standalone urgent care clinic. I believe they have over 300 locations. Um, they're just now branching into North Carolina this year. So they just set up because of market for us. Um, they have locations in Alabama, Louisiana, Mississippi, Kentucky, Indiana, Tennessee, maybe missing one other state, um, Arkansas, I believe, so.
And what about the hours?
Uh, they're usually eight to eight.
Okay.
All right, let me stay where you are. Mike, I'm gonna let you finish your presentation, and then we'll.
That's the last slide.
We'll do questions.
This is the tonal sheet, uh, truck detail sheet from the fixture. And then this is their allocation request. Like I said, 250 gallons, nothing more, sir.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Wilkins, any questions?
No.
Mr. Albright, any other questions?
No, ma'am, no, sir. It's dressing her in the great beauty.
Before you slip.
No, ma'am, no, sir.
All right, I understand I got my hair and everything.
No, sirs.
Mayor Protem.
So the building picture that we just showed, is that like their standard?
Yes.
That they go with, so it probably's gonna look pretty much like that?
I think the only difference between what you're seeing on the screen and what we're gonna build is the doorways shouldn't be flintened on the left side instead of the right. So the doors on the left versus right.
Pretty nice-looking building.
Yeah, they try to keep the prototype shape for all the buildings.
So Mr. Frango's, on the picture with the stormwater pond.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
That one.
Can you read, can you read the second line of the third paragraph? No, I'm teasing you because I'm like, we are looking at this stuff, and this print is so small, if there's anything.
Now, since you're PDF, you just zoom in on that PDF, and you needed to press magnify, so you've gotten it done.
So where the blue is?
Yes.
That's gonna be.
It's gonna be the deeper portions of the fossil. So those represent differences in depth. And, and the way the, the water would move through it, shallower areas to deeper areas. The shallower areas, if you line up the landscape plan, that's where the aquatic plants are, on the, what's called the letoral shelf. We were gonna get, yes. The letoral shelf is where the aquatic plants are. And then in the middle, now those deeper sections where the water can stand.
So, you know that we have one of those pond things behind Food Line, and there are, like, 7,000 turkey buzzards that live back there. Are they gonna possibly move in here?
I don't think so. I mean, I just.
I'm worried about people getting dive bombed by a bird.
Well, no, I mean, you, you could. And, and those birds are protected, you know? You're not allowed to go out there and just shoot a bird to the mouth of them. But, um, no, I, I, I don't think this is a suitable environment for them. I think it's too close to the building. I think there'll be too much activity in those buzzards that built on the ground there. They like to go off in that area because they get sun, they get left to move.
And there is the trees and their forest industry.
And they, on the left, like, there's about 100 of them climbing along the fence where they're landing.
Yeah, they have a lot of trash back there they need to.
So, we have got several small businesses in Creedmore. And the problem we have with them through your department constantly is trash. And the parking lots are dirty, and there's trash all over the place. Is, the problem that we're having with picking up trash, because this is gonna be eyes-on all the time, its location is gonna be front and center. People coming off of 56, people in Food Line. Do we need to change our ordinances to make sure that this property owner maintains their property? Or, uh, is it not, it's not our ordinances, it's the commercial people?
No, we have, no, no, we have nuisance ordinances that are in place regarding, uh, litter and trash and debris. Uh, I think it's just a matter of, you get there on one day, and their porter might have either just been there or won't get there tomorrow, you know, that kind of thing. Um, I'm sure they take care of their parking lots, right?
Our CEO would love them.
Yeah, and this kind of, this kind of buildings and business would be very particular about the trash.
Yeah, I would think so.
And we just have to be more vigilant with our nuisance control. We do have ordinances in place that prevent litter. But it's hard just to, you know, the lack of light levels and the way traffic is on the road.
Okay. I'm excited, I can't wait for it to move in. Can we build it next week?
We're hoping to start in early summer, so.
Okay.
And they're building pretty, pretty quick, sticking out.
Commissioner Gleason?
At the planning board meeting, I believe, are you at the planning board meeting?
Um, it may have been by August.
Okay, um, this is an eight-to-eight operation. It's in and out, they don't have a room that you can keep somebody there for 24 hours and take care of them. They said no opioids would be prescribed at that building. So it's not like, there are urgent cares that wind up keeping people over like an emergency room, that's not gonna happen.
No, the only time they would keep somebody is if they walk in at like 7:45, and it was only gonna be like a 30-minute visit. They're not gonna turn anybody away before 8:00, because that's the only reason it would be. Anything after 8:00 PM is if they just have a patient who needs an extra.
And most of, most of the times that they're keeping them like that, they're affiliated with a hospital. Commissioner Way, any questions?
No, this, this one will be, um, approved as we have third location in North Carolina, the kind of.
This will be, um, our third location as, as a developer. We have one in Washington that just started construction, and then we're also, um, yeah, we're working on one in Henderson as well.
Oh, okay.
So they have other developers that they use, and they have multiple locations involved that they're working on, so.
Commissioner Wilkins?
If I may, sir, motion to approve the large site plan, LSP 2024, DSO 2, and award 250 gallons per day of non-residential utility allocation to this site.
All right, um, we have a motion by Commissioner Wilkins, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries five to zero. And I have to know the people that own the drugstore on Main Street, if you need any help from them, they've been there forever. Really nice people, um, let me know. I am, and I am, you notice I didn't mention me, I just said the drugstore.
Well, thank you guys so much, I'm glad to meet you. Glad to meet you, love.
Um, let's see, got that done, that was made by Commissioner Wilkins. Let's see, uh, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. I'd like to start off this evening with a big thank you to some of my team members, to our finance director and administrative staff for working with our contracted auditor over the past four months to submit and complete the 2024 annual financial audit for the local government commission's deadline of October 31. I'd also like to say thank you goes out to Angie Perry and Troy Willis for a well-attended and safe Main Street trick-or-treating event last Thursday, and to Mike Frango's and Steve Edwards and their staff for a well-planned and productive litter sweep this past Saturday. Thank you, Mike. Be sure to thank your folks for that as well.
We're going to spend. Do we have any idea, chief, how many people we had on Main Street?
No, sir, I'm not sure. All of them.
Not all of them, because I, I went through 2,000 pieces of candy in about 35 minutes.
I got a whole bag, wasn't nobody paying.
No, no, if we got rid of ours and I closed that door, hit a lull, close the doors, and we hauled out of there. All right, anyway, thank you.
Right, the next item you may recall was identified by the Board at their 2019 strategic planning retreat as one of the top priorities. This item was rolled on, has rolled on for five years now. This evening, I have good news for the Board. A request for proposals for a City of Creedmore Emergency Operation Plan was prepared and sent out last month to multiple vendors and are due back to the city clerk's office not later than October, November the 15th. I want to express my appreciation to the city clerk, Barbara Rouse, who has this item on her work plan for getting this project moving. $20,000 was budgeted and approved by, uh, by the Board, uh, in 2025 in the capital improvement project. In the very near future, the Board will see a request coming back to award contract to the selected vendor. We expect some good turnout from that. And lastly, I cannot thank Sarah enough. I know she's, she had something come up tonight and had to run. Uh, thank her enough for the behind-the-scenes planning and execution of having the late meals before our board meetings. The two large compromised trees that we discussed a couple of weeks ago have been taken down as presented and recommended by the city engineer Carl Barclay. So he's moving forward with the next step in that project. Beginning tomorrow morning, we have our first round of interviews for the Parks and Rec Director vacancy. In addition to the HR Director and myself, the former Parks and Rec Director, Chris Horgan, will be sitting in on our interview panel. Chris is excited about coming back to Creedmore, spending the day with us. Over the past several weeks, I've declared the following items: city surplus, one-floor cleaning machine, two-petal oats from Lake Rogers Park, and 17 Christmas trees, which will be listed on GovDeals for sale. Number eight, the contract for services agreement between Creedmore and PSG or Allen Steinbeck expired on October the 8th, 2024. And after talking to some of the team and Mike and a few others, we decided that with no more work pending, we decided to close out that purchase order for PSG and return the unused balance of $6,739 to the Capital Reserve Fund. DC3 executive summary for the month of October reported 46 work orders open and 33 were closed. And the city clerk and executive assistant are com- in the process of completing with your decision tonight, uh, the proposed 2025 board meeting schedule for your review and approval at your December meeting. So we needed that input, and we're, I looked at a draft today, and it looks really good. We've checked all the holidays and everything. Uh, the one thing I would like to bring, next item, is that with that new schedule in mind, I have tentatively penciled in the city's 2025 annual strategic planning workshop for Saturday, February the 8th, 2025. It was February the 10th last year. Any input from the mayor, Mayor Protem or Commissioners regarding the retreat's agenda, topics of interest, speakers, presenters, et cetera, would be appreciated for my planning purposes. So if, if, if you're pretty much okay with that date, I want to send out a save the date to the elected officials date, I want to send out a save the date to the elected officials and the superintendent and a bunch of other folks to go ahead and get on their calendar and save a place to come. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Any questions for the city managers, uh, mayor pro Tim?
So is Commissioner Way going to be involved in the EOP in any position, in any way? Since he's our public safety person?
Um, if he wants to be, we'd like to have him.
Yep.
You want to be involved in that? Yeah, we got four companies I think we sent it out to. Robert, if you want to, I mean, Mr. Commissioner Way, if you'd like to dig those oats?
Sir, it's fine. I can be Robert.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Albright.
Um, Mike, you said on number 11, you have all the information worked out for the, for not number 11. Yeah, number 11, with all the, with the new, um, meeting agenda on, on Tuesday.
We were waiting for the next decision on whether to move to work sessions.
Yes.
So we've pretty much got the rest of it worked out.
But we have like National Night Out and all those other things that have always throw a wrench into our work.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. We're learning our lessons as we go forward and, and we look back and keep good notes and, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not hearing any. We'll move on. Sigwassa report. Mr. Way or mayor pro Tim?
Mr. Way.
I'm Mr. Mayor. I forwarded the latest director report to the board. I hope everyone had a chance to glance at it and review it. Uh, the biggest thing to note is the, um, Lake Road pump station has been completed. They have done the, uh, chlorine burnout. So everything seems to be working, uh, according to plan. Um, hopefully we can figure out if there's any other issues or what else we can, can go forward with. Um, we had a strategic planning session with Sigwassa last week on Thursday, which was great. We were able to reinforce some of the issues that are front and foremost and beforehand. And the biggest thing is our water quality, color and smell that, that we're ongoing with the process with. Also the PFAS and PFOS filtration system, we're trying to be at the forefront to get in on this. Um, some of the other things and challenges during that strategic planning was, uh, some of the cogs maybe for the smells and just coloration of the water. And a lot of that, um, we've seen it come up too as some of the old pipes, specifically in Butler and some of the pipes here in Creedmoor that were put in in 1939 and 1940 that still are in the ground and haven't revealed themselves in a leakage to be repaired yet. So, uh, it's ongoing process. Um, we plan to meet again, I, I believe somewhere along the first of the year for another strategic planning session. Uh, we all thought as a board, it was something that we needed to do, uh, considering we do it in our respective boards in our jurisdictions now to have a planning session. Uh, it's my understanding that Sigwassa, the last time they done it was three or four years ago, fighting, uh, before COVID started, right when COVID was starting. So they haven't had to sit down with all of us to, to hammer out what we think of the problems in our communities.
Mayor Pro Tim, anything to add?
Just that in the chlorine burnout, they're only, um, if anybody notices chlorine smell in your water, that's going to be normal for a while. I didn't have any, and I was told that's extremely unusual, that I should be smelling a lot of chlorine and I'm not smelling anything. My total, they need to go back and check it one more time because apparently it might not be working. But, um, yeah, the, the last strategic planning session we had was during COVID and we did it, um, via Zoom. And it was very, it was entertaining, to say the least, considering it was the first one. And we decided that we would start doing these once a year, um, and, and keep up with it, with our strategic plan, which is a live document and a CIP, which is a live document also. So hopefully we can do that. I did suggest in there that since all the municipalities are involved in getting the I-85 sanitary sewer project done and every municipality and the county would benefit from this I-85 project being done, that maybe the municipalities would like to contribute some money to Sigwassa to help offset it a little bit because it would benefit our citizens by, if we could offset it a little bit and not raise rates. Um, and that was just a suggestion that I made during that. It didn't come up for a vote or anything yet, but I might bring it up again. And, and Commissioner Way brought up again the fire hydrant agreement and the contract that Creedmoor and Sigwassa had, that Sigwassa was supposed to maintain the fire hydrants and the fire departments are doing it. And there was another municipality was a little concerned about flushing the fire hydrants and if the fire hydrant got brought, broken, would they be held responsible? So we're going to, we're going to, we've got a copy of the contract. We're, we're going to push this. Robert's been pushing it since the day he got on the board. And, um, we're going to have to push it again.
When is the next Sigwassa meeting?
Next Tuesday.
Got it. Strategic planning meeting? Uh, just a general meeting.
General meeting.
It was nice to see you at the last one.
Yeah, I popped in when I got the time.
Yeah, November 12th, Mr. Mayor.
September, uh, November 12th.
That's next Tuesday.
Thank you. All right, uh, commissioners report. Let's start with Commissioner Wilkins.
On Tuesday, October 11th, I attended National Night Out. On Friday of the following week, I attended the G.C. Harley Student of Merit Awards Program at their school. On October 22nd, I attended Granville County Crime Stopper Banquet. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Way?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, went to the National Night Out and Sigwassa strategic planning session. Uh, made it to Main Street for a little bit for Halloween, Fire Department. And that's about it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Albright.
Um, I didn't have anything, um, this time, but I did help, uh, polling on Thursday for a little while, for about an hour and a half. So, yeah.
Mr. Gleason.
I've got a couple of things. I went to the Sigwassa meeting last month, went to the Crime Stoppers banquet. And I got a couple of things that I want to address. I've been emailed from a few constituents. I don't like to email back to a constituent with my opinion on anything necessarily, so I'll give my opinion in public. Um, I was approached by a couple of citizens that we should talk to Sigwassa and tell them that they should assign a public information officer to work with nextdoor.com. Um, personally, my opinion is nextdoor.com is seen and read by thousands of people, have nothing to do with Sigwassa or the City of Creedmoor. And I think that would be irresponsible of Sigwassa to get involved on Nextdoor. Um, I am happy that Sigwassa has its new forums and, and trying to get that, uh, done. I was, and I think I mentioned it to one of our Sigwassa members, that I was disappointed in the money spent to have a company find out how many lead pipes we had in the City of Creedmoor. And I, and I see in Creedmoor, Butler News, that we have little lead pipes in the City of Creedmoor. But then it said in little print in parentheses that we really haven't checked out a lot of the old houses in the middle of town. These were all this study was done from new construction, new developments, but they haven't checked whether some house on one of the back streets in the City of Creedmoor has a lead pipe. They said that would have to be done by going to the house, getting those. So the bill, part of this study, which, everything they did, Sigwassa could have done using information that's on the internet. Um, my other big question with people keep, with the PFAS. Again, I was originally disheartened by the original response of Sigwassa. Now, we're talking probably a couple of years ago. But they, Sigwassa has improved what it's doing, and it's trying to do it. And people have to understand, and which I don't make people, I don't think people understand that Sigwassa was not responsible for PFAS. Nobody in the City of Creedmoor was responsible for PFAS. But there's a lot of wealthy companies in the United States of America that created it. So we're going after the people. They got to fix it. And they know, I know I got to fix it. I know I can buy bottled water. It's expensive. And it's going to be expensive to get the PFAS out of our water in Sigwassa. People have to understand that. But the bottom line is where we should be going is going after the people like ExxonMobil who created all these PFAS chemicals and get them to pay or give money to, to water supply companies like Sigwassa to, to benefit this. But Sigwassa at this point seems to be moving at a pace that is as fast as they can actually go. Um, so I just wanted to have that on record, not on an email to somebody. Um, of course, I'd like to see it go faster, but that's the way it is. I had a couple of other calls from constituents. I got in touch with city manager about some road issues with Department of Public Works. I got to spend some time with, meet and greet all the public works people. I just wanted to say that I'm happy to see that, um, our GPW is working with Butler PDW. If they need a truck that can carry stuff that we can't, we borrow from them. If they need something we have to borrow from them. So I'm glad to see we have that rapport going between us and, and the town of Butler. Um, I'm, just to conclude, I will be out of town next weekend. I'm sorry I will miss the chorus at the high school. Um, my wife and I have done what we normally do with that. And I'm sorry that I will not be at Veterans Day. I just would hope that you would give all the vets there, that I thank them for their service and anything we can do for them. Be sure. Thanks.
Um, Commissioner Wilkins.
One addition. Thank you, Mr. Gleason, for reminding me. I'll be out of town the next two weekends.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. All right. So this is a busy month. Did, uh, National Night Out, Sigwassa meeting, Sigwassa strategic plan, veterans, um, organization meeting, which is always a enjoyable night. The veterans are, are wonderful and we're always, and they're always positive. Um, they're looking forward to the veterans breakfast. And today we got an announcement from the Creedmoor City Tavern, which is on Facebook. They are presenting. They are sponsoring, footing the bill, providing the staff, uh, protein, bacon, pork sausage, turkey sausage, uh, biscuits and gravy, hash browns, casseroles, scrambled eggs, fruit, pancakes, muffins, bread pudding, coffee, sweet tea and orange juice. They have gone way far beyond with the menu this year. And, um, there was a few people that had requested specialty items and they have, seem to have taken care of this. They didn't have to do this, but they volunteered because the veterans are very important to them. Um, we have got a great program. We've got a great speaker and, um, the Bag Pipes of America will be coming for us again to do the, uh, taps at the end. And hopefully people will take the time to walk down to the Veterans Memorial and see it in person. Um, I attended the Campo meeting in, uh, Cary, Crime Stoppers Dinner, uh, planning board meeting, and the Fireman's Day Parade, which I had a wonderful chauffeur in the Fireman's Day Parade. We had a good time. To answer, um, Mr., Commissioner Gleason, Commissioner Gleason, the, I don't know why that article said that about lead and copper piping. The regulation came down from the government and we analyzed all the lead and copper pipes in our system. If there are lead and copper pipes in homes, all we can do is notify the homeowner. We can't replace them or not going to replace them. And I, I believe that that's what the article meant. I, I don't, I don't assume to be a mind reader, but I do know that the lead and copper, we did find very few lead and copper. Um, as far as the companies dumping in the PFAS, uh, we, I have asked that question myself. When they tested the water in Lake Holt to get the original levels, they tested on five, um, areas along the shoreline and the PFAS levels were very low there from what I was told. The highest concentration of PFAS is in the center of Lake Holt. So they don't, and there's nothing around Lake Holt to dump. So we're not exactly sure where the PFAS in that lake are coming from, what is the source. But we, hopefully, the company that we hired will, um, figure that out. Um, and I think that we hired a company to determine about the lead and copper pipes because we didn't have an engineer at that time and it was too much for Scott to do it at that time. But, um, and we do have a, um, public information officer. Her name is Kristy Lee. And I thank you for, um, giving me the information about citizens reaching out to you. And you're exactly right. Uh, we don't think that Sigwassa should have a public information forum on social media. We have it on our website and, um, we hoping that people will continue to fill out the customer questionnaires. The questionnaires are not just for people who have water problems. It's for people who don't have water problems. We're not going to learn where there's problems in an area if we only get a one z, two z here and again. If we get a lot of them, um, in one area, then that's, that's a serious problem and we have to get involved with that a little bit more. I want to remind everybody that the Christmas tree lighting is December 6th and the, and it will be at the community center. And the Christmas parade will be at 11 o'clock the next day on the 7th. I'll ask all my commissioners if they will wrap empty boxes to make presents to go on our float again. And hopefully we will have as much fun on that float this year as we did last year, minus the rain.
The mules and the.
[laughing].
Only if you're going to walk behind them. They make me do bags in New York, but they don't do it in Creedmoor.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Um, mine will be short. Some of these things I do, not as a mayoral thing, but that I had to do. Uh, I'm pharmacy rep on the, the Granville County Opioid Committee. Uh, we've gotten a lot of money to try to combat addiction and abuse and we're working on that. Have an executive director and is coming along. Granville Health System Board of Trustees met. Hospital's doing really well. I want to apologize for not being at the litter sweep, but I feel like I pick up litter all during the year, so it wasn't that big a deal. Um, plus I was helping one of my elderly neighbors get up leaves. Uh, Crime Stoppers Banquet, we, it went really well. Congratulate our, our chief and his police officer for the awards that they received. Um, let's see. Um, the Fireman's Day Parade went real well. I have picked out a car for the mayor. Um, I had several people look at it and I told them that's why their taxes were going up because we were buying a Corvette. Uh, hopefully they knew I was kidding. Um, let's see. Uh, National Night Out went real well. Again, Chief, thanks for your folks and especially Jessica and Angie, I think had a lot to do with it. Or Angie shifted it to Jessica, I think, this year. So tell them we appreciate all of that. All right, uh, we move now to, is there anything else? We do not have a closed session, am I correct?
Correct.
Anything else needs to come before the board? Not hearing anything. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Wilkins has made the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bye. Mr. Wilkins.
What was the price tag on that bed? What was the price tag on that bed?
Little over a hundred and three thousand.
Three, I can round that up when I.
Yeah, but it was a 2024.
I can round that up when I stick.